Their base of New Orleans customers. And I think that's one of the bigger reasons that they moved. I don't think it was anything against Biloxi, what we did or didn't do for them. That's my understanding.
I heard all that. Understand that, but I mean, we worked with them, set up a good deal. You know, set up a nice little dock and everything for them. And they seem to have been doing quite well there. Can they do better in Basingil? I really can't see how. It's just not the numbers of people that we have here every day. But you know, I just thought it was kind of strange. Doing that well, that somebody left anyway. That's what I was just trying to figure out. There was other reasons like what Kenell heard that about what they said. They actually wanted to be there first in Basingil. But you know, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And again, to bring this up one more time. The least term has done what to the Audubon of the work? If this work is stopped, the expenses is going to be on who?
The expense is going to be on somebody, probably us, in order to fix that. And hopefully, we'll have enough budget to sustain about 100,000 extra dollars for that work stoppage and remobilization. That's, I've got an update about, you know, and we're looking probably 60 more days before 52 families and flightless birds leave towards Deer Island and then South America. We report from the Audubon Society, who's got control of that beachfront from stem to stern. But that's the, you know, that's the story on it. I got to report on my.
I'm calling, you know, most people want to know why we caved into the birds. That's the first thing. So we're not, that's just the way it's set up. I said it did stop the, let's finish our work. You know, and it makes everything look bad because it looks like it's all stacked up there now. So it's not clean looking. So I wonder how long that's got to last before we.
60 more days is the latest report. Now, we can put that on B news if we need to.
Yeah. And when we bring this up again about the short term, who would live? When we get the planning commission, they passed another one on St. John's, which we then denied this inside the neighborhood. To expect citizens to come to all these meetings to fight for their rights, for their home, for their property, you know, and that's all that we're doing. It seemed to be more aggravating them than somebody from out of town that bought a piece of property and just nobody houses on it. So I mean, sometimes we either got to stand up for the people in the city of Biloxi and the homeowners and the taxpayers, because the people that buy their properties are not from here. They haven't lived here. They don't care about Biloxi. They don't care a few dollars. You know, that's their right to do that. But while we keep putting them inside these neighborhoods, when we then voted that down five or six times inside our residential areas, I mean, we have to have something better than that. I mean, that's not what you're looking for all the time, short term. We've got 1,600 of them rooms now, you know? So I mean, I don't know why we need any more, period. You know, you got the planning commission to keep vote for this thing. That's why actually the guy I won the award, I don't want him winning. So I mean, I just, I need to sit up and talk to you about it. I need to do that. I'm going to stand up for the people that pay the taxes, that live here, that have been supporting this town forever. And it's really created the town. That's going to, going back to that mine, did we ever check on the baseball fields that are sinking and the light poles that are sinking? Have we looked at that, something we could do to stop that and that complex?
Yeah. When the whole engineering, the subsurface was addressed in those estimates. So there's a whole lot of drainage and stabilization in that, I think it was $6.2 million estimate of the improvement. It's in there.
Yeah. But I mean, the, the light poles are sinking. And I was just wondering, I don't think there has anything to drain it, that being on wetland. I was just wondering, anything we could do on that to actually stop them? There's two or three poles and they're probably dropped a foot and a half. And they're not slowing down, so.
I never knew that.
If somebody had studied on that, to make sure we take care of it. Okay, do you notice it's fixing it?
Michelle Patino evaluated that. We'll make sure that they address that stabilization of the, of the existing structure.
All right, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Gines.
All right. Just wanted to thank Bill Ray. I see some of the cutters in the, in the area and the neighborhood, so I appreciate them coming in the neighborhood, cutting, cutting down, cutting their little grass, sprouting up. Also, I want to thank Ms. Cecilia and Keith for making my programs go well. They took care of me on a couple of little awards. And I want to thank Ms. Cheryl Bell for finishing that up on Henry Bay Park. So I appreciate that. The only thing is, at the Old Lee Street Baseball Park, I think the grass is getting high in that area, so. I think I got one call on that.
The lay down area, the lay down area, you talking about?
Yeah, the old layout area. I think we had, Oscarinda was in it. If we can just get that taken care of. And then later on, Mayor, I asked about the AT&T poles, if you can give me an update on that later on.
Yeah.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Neiman. Mr. Deming.
Yeah, Ms. Bell. I see on item F on the consent agenda that we're addressing the playground surface. Have we, if you'll come up here, let me ask you a few questions. First, is there anything we can do to get the splash pad over? It's just, it's getting worn and run down. I've had tons of residents comment on how great the other ones are at the, at the point look versus ours in, in, at the Market Sherry Library. If we could do something just to give it a, you know, a refresher?
Are you talking about as far as adding more?
No, I think.
Or putting a surface down?
I think just bringing it back up to where it looks like we have taken care of. You know, the paint maybe, just surfacing.
Prior to opening it.
I'm sorry?
We did paint it prior to opening it.
Right. I really wanted to ask you about the conversations, if we've had any more conversations with, I guess it's Mississippi Power and the lights for the field. There was, there were some suggestions about getting into an agreement, some service contract with them that would, that would replace or refresh the lights for the field and, and keep us from having to pay an upfront, large capital cost.
Correct, but I'm not sure that they will do it because that's Coast Electric. I've been trying to find somebody at Coast Electric that would get with the Musco Group that has the major warranty. So Jerry Logan and I are working on that right now. And I think they're going to get on board.
Okay.
Mississippi Power is, now whether they can, you know, go out there and do it with it being Coast Electric, I, I don't know.
Okay. If you'll just keep me.
Oh, they couldn't.
If you'll keep me abreast on, on that as it, as it changes, I'd appreciate it.
And I'll look at the splash pad.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes. Excuse me, several things. Want to check on the progress of the, that lighting of the historic oak in Edgewater Drive. Is there any update on that? I think Len Moran did the work and the lights, almost all of them were working, looked terrific. And then there was an issue, and I know Ms. Bell's concerned about it, but Mr. Leonard, who I understand is doing well by the way, had said that, you know, there was going to be some follow-ups. I don't, I don't know if that's occurred, but I know we, we paid a couple of thousand dollars to have that done, and it was lit up for maybe several weeks, so.
I think 2,500, 2,800, you know, back on. Morgan is working up, he's kind of up on top of the ground, you know, by just doing a few more.
Right. Okay. I'll check back with you in a minute. Thank you, Sherri. Tree stump removal at Pennzoil Park. Mr. Mayor, we were.
No updates. We're searching, but we will. But we'll move those stumps.
We got to, we got to get that done. It's been there a year.
We work on some spreadsheets for it.
We going to do it this fiscal year? We got seven, eight weeks left.
Yeah.
That's a yes?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Writing it down.
We'll do it.
Margaret Parrishich Park, I passed by there. I had somebody from the Parrishich family contact me. There's a fountain there, I guess just recirculating water, and that, that has been turned off. It no longer works, or it's been turned off. There were benches there at one time that, I think two or three, and they've been removed. And then there's a, a brick podium, I guess angled at the top, and they've got a plaque that dedicated to Mrs. Parrishich. It's kind of an informational thing, and that's cracked into two pieces, a top and a bottom. The top's just sitting on there. I think the homeless issue, vagrants just lounging on the benches accounted for the removal of the benches. But it may be in situations like that, you, you buy benches with dividers in there so folks can't lay on them, just a thought. But anyway, I told the Parrishich family I'd check on that, and if, if you could follow up and see that some things are done there to get things in working order, I'd appreciate it. Also, are we dealing with panhandling any differently now than we were years ago? I know particularly at the Fernwood Corner, which is sometimes jurisdictional issues there, but also I've noticed at intersections, and I know that we have an ordinance, I don't, for some reason, I'm thinking it prohibits them from panhandling in certain areas, and maybe we just need to enforce that, or it's just, we need to be doing some things differently if we're going to, you know, expect a different outcome, I think. The last thing is, I want to thank Public Works. I don't know, it's Billy back there. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I saw they were striping Big Lake Road today. I, I just noticing driving around the city, going from point A to point B, you're, you're got, we need more employees. So if you want a job, Public Works is looking for employees. So is Parks and, a number of vacancies. But the folks that I see working, Parks and Recreation and Public Works, let me tell you, they're blowing and going. They work from the time they get there till the time they go home in all their seats. So just appreciate that. Thank you. That concludes my questions and report.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'm glad to see item E on the consent agenda. That's for the resurfacing of your crushed road. Do you know what the scope of that is? Are they just going to, just put a, resurface it and, and then stripe it?
Yeah. Bill Ray?
So basically, from the bridge to the sewer plant area? Okay. All right. And I know there was a pretty bad accident there the other night. Somebody got off the road, another vehicle coming or something, and it's just, that's important that we get that done as soon as possible. Second thing, Ms. Bell, do you know where we're at? I know that we're supposed to be getting playgrounds pretty soon for Eagle Point Park. Do you know when?
Yes, mid-October to the end of August. It's very far, just left out in California.
Okay. And then one other thing is Carley Lane in Eagle Point. I drove that again the other day. We have an issue that we keep filling those holes in, and I guess because it's on a hill, it's continuing just to walk. When we put that blacktop in those holes, it's, and every time we have a rain, it's just coming in and washing all that out. So if there's anything we can do to get that Carley Lane paved, that, that would be great. It's, it's pretty bad. I drove through there the other day, and it beat you up really bad. If, if we can take a look at that and just see what we can do to get that paved. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Deming.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if George Lawrence covered it. But down on the beach near the Blind Tiger, the Biloxi Small Craft Harbor sign is hanging down as of Friday. If there's anything we can do to either put a new sign up or, or staple that one back into place on the board mount?
Plywood surfaces.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. On my report, I have a few things. Several meetings ago, I requested investigation on some drainage issues, particularly Hinge in Place, Destiny Plantation, and Waters View. If I can get a follow-up on that soon, I'd appreciate a, a follow-up on those cases. Also, Cedar Lake, I had reported a couple of meetings ago that there were some fire hydrants that the grass had grown over. I had a couple of pictures forwarded to me recently, and some of the residents are just asking what is going to be done on those, particularly by Spring Lane. And then, let's see. There was a case open, and this question is for Jerry Creel. We opened a case, there was a citation that was reissued for an owner off of Old Highway 67 that was, had a lay down yard illegally. Is there anything else being done to prohibit any activity there since it is illegal activity? A citation has been issued, an arrest warrant for the owner? Is there any new news on that piece of property?
We're working with the judge.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director, for that. And that concludes my report. We move to the public agenda. This is for citizens comments.
We have a total of. I just wanted to say one thing. I guess y'all realize that Guppo's having their 124th birthday on July 28th.
Who?
Guppo. They're 199 years younger than we go. You know what I mean? And we're not confident, 10 times more than they ever thought they were accomplished. I just thought I'd bring that up. They're 199 years behind us. They'll catch up one of these days.
And that was George Lawrence making that comment.
Right. We'll sing happy birthday to him when it's appropriate. Okay, we'll move on to public comments, citizen comments, excuse me. We have a total of 45 minutes allotted. Each person, when you're recognized, come up here to the front, take a seat, write your name and address legibly on the document on the table, and state your name clearly and your address for the record for the clerk to record. You'll have three minutes. I'll start on this side of the room. My left, your right. Anyone would like to come up and speak.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Natalie Rickert, and my address is 266 Seal Avenue. Mayor and City Council, first, thank you for your service. As meetings normally aren't our favorite things to do, I'm sure I'm not alone in that I'd rather be enjoying the last days of summer with my kids at the water park. But here we are, because we're grownups and we're accepting responsibilities. And I trust that as part of your reason for seeking election was your desire for you and your families, your children and your grandchildren to be free, to grow, to learn, to make opportunities, to do good, and to lead dignified, quiet, and peaceful lives in our city. My husband and I have four children, and while I said we should be swimming today, the truth is that my favorite thing to do with them is to read when I can get them to sit still. We love to read together. That's how we learn things. That's how I can tell you. But we also read to learn, to laugh together, and we read to appreciate imaginative art. But my favorite books are the ones that strike truth in our hearts, the ones that point to hope or something beyond the trap of our own selves, books that acknowledge evil and brokenness without wallowing in it. They are books that point us to moral excellence. We often get our books at the library. So I would ask to, like, like to ask you for careful consideration in your decision for the contribution to our libraries. I can see that, as I'm sure you've considered the purpose and role of government, the library is not an essential part of governing our city. But it is a benefit and service I greatly appreciate, and I do not support any cut to the library's funding. I also realize that funding is not a solitary issue. We might blame others for stirring the pot or wish the content issue weren't so publicized, but here we are, and maybe that's good. For example, I commend one of our councilmen for requesting information regarding the library's collection and displays. Each of you to do the same. It's important for us all to know what's going on in our library and what's in our library. I know you don't have time, neither do I, but I will commit to see what books are available to my children in our community. To be clear, in regard to content as it's tied to funding, I would be against any item in the children's area that is primarily profane, sexually explicit, extremely violent, or any visual depiction of a sexual act in a children's book. And I would ask all parents in our city to seek to determine if these items are even available in our library collection. In conclusion, our libraries are a great resource, a wonderful benefit, and a good thing. The books in them will shape our lives, our character, and help to develop the next generation of citizens. Therefore, I submit that we have the responsibility to both fund our libraries and to carefully examine the content they house. Thank you to the librarians for their work, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Come on up.
I'm Sonia Murray, 407 Oaklawn Place, Biloxi, Mississippi, with Friends of the Library. I'm a widow, married for 59 years with children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. I carry no brief for the, the LGBTQ community, but I know that they are also a part of our community and deserve respect, as everybody deserves respect. However, it now seems that our libraries are under attack. Our librarians are highly trained and can be trusted to keep our children safe, as they kept my children safe and are now keeping my great-grandchildren safe. Our librarians would never, ever allow books to be placed in the children's section, suggesting that children should change their gender and cut off our, cut off any bodily parts to change their gender. Our libraries would never, librarians would never allow such a thing. We can trust our librarians. Years ago, there was an incident in which a teenage boy asked a librarian for a book on making bombs. Well, guess what the librarian replied? Sorry, it's not available. Librarians will not give children anything harmful. They act to protect our children. There is another side of this coin. Church members are entirely entitled to their religious beliefs, but not to force them on others by trying to prevent any group of books from being taken off the shelves of the adult section of the library. I don't want to read LGBT books, but they're there for those who do. If any group can take off LGBT books from the library shelves, they can also say, oh, they don't like the novels, the mystery novels that I read, or the, the books on sports that you read, or anything else. We will all be under attack. We cannot allow ourselves to be attacked. It's a slippery and dangerous slope. And books on no subject should be banned from the adult section. People should be free to read whatever they choose. We are a free country, a secular country, and as adults, we are free to read whatever we want. Censorship is wrong. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left? Your right? Anyone on my right? Your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Okay, there being no more comments, public comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would start with the ordinance.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to modify solar energy equipment and planned development.
I have a motion.
Motion.
By Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. This is the first reading. We'll move on to the resolutions. Item B.
Resolution to grant conditional use approval to authorize an existing single-family residence to be utilized as a bed and breakfast located at 1012 Beach Boulevard.
Chair entertainer motion?
I'll move it.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, this is where Walter Plus had his bed and breakfast. And I think that when the years so passed, the time, so they actually just kind of come back and get the conditional use approved, they had the bed and breakfast back in there. I mean, that's basically it. All you're doing is approving the same thing we had once before.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gines. All right. Anyone else have a comment? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sorry about that.
Motion carries unanimous. Item C.
Resolution granting minor subdivision, final plant approval for an unaddressed parcel upon the Market Road.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Mr. Barrett. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
All right. Second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? Mr. Barrett?
Jerry, this is that piece of property right there, just, I guess, sort of across the street from where the nursery was?
That's correct.
And they're just splitting that? It's where the water tower, water, big water tank is.
They're taking a three acre piece of property and dividing it into two. It complies with all of our ordinances.
Okay. All right. No further questions.
All right. Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add.
Anyone else? There being no one, we'll call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Let's see here. Ding 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 ding.
I'll come back to you, Mr. Lawrence.
I'm done. I have nothing. Thank you.
Pogo on N. This is outside the gate. This is for maintaining all the grounds, the roundabout.
Yeah, I think we do some, yeah, right.
Okay, what did they do? They, they going to do it? Oh, we're going to do it? Are they going to work with us to do it?
I think we're going to do, based on, I think that's what the case is. We're going to do that. Bill Ray's going to do it. Yeah, he's going to do it. Just call Bill Ray.
Bill Ray, is he going to answer? He going to do it?
He's going to do it, yeah. He's to coordinate with.
All right. Is this all the way down the vision, just outside the gate on Forest?
Outside the park, outside the circle.
Yeah. Have y'all, have, we had much complaints so far about all them stoplights? Because they hadn't been using, they hadn't been using?
They've been flashing, and then they've been on a couple of times. I haven't heard any complaints.
And how bad is it, it's still have been active? We still digging holes there again?
No, I think it's a, it's coming along. I don't know when, how far away from doing the, the base coat. We don't have anybody from the engineering firm here, but moving along.
All the engineering firm, they liked all them lights and everything, so that's a, when we take it all down, we have to pay them again? So take all that down? When it don't work? They have full stoplights to Bone Street? That's probably, that's pretty bad.
Well, it's going to be synchronized. It can act like one light.
Yeah. Well, the next one is on the, the lights on MG and Polk?
Yeah.
Just an increase in the power bill itself, or there's more use of the lights?
I think it's just increasing the power. The bill itself.
So how much we had adjust that now?
I, I'm not sure, but it's 860,000 a year, and I'm not sure what, what it is, based on demand and what the latest demand factors. I'd have to ask Mike on that calculation.
So I mean, it's just another, they had to increase for the ball field. That's not good for us.
Well, there's been a couple more events that, that.
Is that the gas?
High school stuff, and, but you know, the whole, whole idea is to minimize the surges in electricity, because although it could have been set up the right way with other ballpark surges, it, it's one service, and that impacts the cost, you know, as you flip these lights on and off. It, it impacts the rest of the service.
Well, we had the same file with the in-tax gas company? Increase? It's probably been increased also. I mean, do we have just a flat number that we're pulling for both of them?
I'm, I'm not sure of the increases you're talking about on the, but on the power bill and on the power for that particular service. I think we're pretty much hindered by the design with a single service instead of two services for the light itself.
Yeah, it's like you say, we want to have a good year, we only lose a million dollars. I told you we had a good year.
That's a good year.
So now it's more money.
Mayor, you had an increase in some activities there as well, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, they had some more events, some high school events that were, that generated a little, you know, some numbers and, and attendance is definitely up.
And then when I said on G, the two fences that you put, where are those fences located at?
On the, for the, for the police department, right, the fence behind there is what we're talking about, yeah. To completely, you know, fence in vehicles and so forth, give me an update on that, G. Yeah, and what's on the fence is, is the difference between the grant received and what we need to do it, but we're moving forward with the, with the project, I think, yeah.
Okay, and this says on the point cadet.
Fence, I mean, the, the point cadet park fence?
I guess, yeah, that says.
Yeah, that, yeah, I think that's what we're, lost in Zeta.
Okay, just checking then.
On the, along the walkway.
Alright, thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Lawrence, are you finished?
Is it?
Okay, Mr. Gines?
I have none.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Just one small clarification, on N, the landscaping issue that, that Mr. Lawrence is discussing about Keesler, when you look at the, the picture attachment to the attachment to the agenda item, it's got the orange boundary for Keesler, and then it has the, the legend depicts what the landscaped areas for the city of Biloxi are, and what for Keesler's responsibilities are, and I understand that, that's what checker pattern is what we're, or crisscross is what we're gonna take care of for Keesler, but my concern is, the other areas within the orange boundary line, are those Keesler properties, and if so, who's taking care of those?
I'm, I'm not sure totally, looking.
Well, if those are Keesler properties and they're taking care of them, then why don't they just?
It's, it's part of the project and part, part of the budget, I'm sure, to, you know, give it.
The dividing line is the division, the back of the, the back of these old lots, I believe.
What, what does that, what does that orange line represent?
Mine's black and white, so I'm, I'm not sure when you're saying orange.
So the, bring me your thing, and I'll show you the orange line that's on our, so. Oh yeah, I see. So that's.
Those orange lines, that orange box of lots that we gave to Keesler, and they have control of those lots, so.
So they're gonna be doing landscaping on those lots?
I'm not sure, I think those may be their, those may be their lots to maintain, let me see.
Those are six lots we did from north to south.
I, I don't know, I know it may seem de minimis, but it almost seems pointless that we have a resolution to take one strip when they've got to cut the grass around that one strip.
Well, I noticed around the oak tree was, was there was some effort to make that sort of a signature, and we would coordinate with them, that, that oak tree that we went some, right to the south of the actual entrance of the gate, so I don't know exactly, you know, with the long-term play on that, as well as, you know, some of the lots that they own, if that's all landscaping on those lots that we donated to them, we purchased with them.
So what's, what's the, the basis of this MOU, just for this one strip? Why, my question is, why are we focused on this one little strip in that area if we're not focused on those other grass areas, if we don't even know who's landscaping those or who's responsible for landscaping those? Why don't we tie this all together?
Well, again, because of the ownership I think Peter was alluding to, but if we have to do it, we'll do it in, in, through this MOU.
Well, if we have to do it, my, my other concern is, if we have to do this type of landscaping, are we being compensated for it? We have a hard time maintaining our own landscaping before we add landscaping requirements that belong to someone else.
I don't know the long-term, you know, answer to that question, but I'll get that for you.
Can we?
Yeah.
Is there a, is there a purpose that this need, would need to be passed? Can I move to?
Yeah, let's table it.
Table this until we can?
We'll get the, we'll get the base representative to make some clarification of this.
Question to table item N, do I have a second? Ms. Newman, any other discussion? All in favor to table N? Those opposed, table N is, or item N is now tabled.
Subject to call.
Subject to call, Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing, I would just like to say, again, it's great to see item E on, on here, it's, it's something that's really, really needed badly, and the sooner we can get this done, the better, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, okay, are there any exceptions? Anyone have any exceptions? Speak now, or forever, hold your peace.
I'm a no on D.
Alright, Mr. Demming is a no on D, item D. Anyone else have an exception? There being no one, I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to code enforcement hearings, we'll go ahead and open those up, Mr. Creel, item Start when you're ready.
Item A, William Russell, Helen, 384 Park Drive, this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of William Russell, Helen? There being no one, this case is closed, item B.
Ray Landry, 757 Helen Drive, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ray Landry? There being no one, case is closed, item C.
Leonard P. and James E. McAtee, 2068 Greater Avenue, this property is still in
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Leonard P. and James E. McAtee? There being no one, this case is closed.
Jerry, could I, Jerry, could I ask you a question? I know we talked about this before, 450 Oaklawn in Biloxi, where are we at with that? We're supposed to be looking at demolishing that house?
The Little White House, we're bringing that to the City Council for their review. We're probably two or three weeks away, we just have some things that we have to do as part of due process to bring it to the council, so it is, it is coming.
Yeah, I would say 17 years later, it looked like we need to do something a lot quicker than 17 years to get these things done. It's been since Katrina, and nothing been done in the house. Just wanna make sure we follow up on it.
Yes, sir.
Alright, routine agenda, do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Barrett, Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Barrett?
No, I defer to George.
Mr. Demming, alright, who's got the latest report? Ms. Newman? Mr. Gines? Is that our body? Did I get our body?
Whoa, whoa, are you back there?
Mr. Lawrence?
Get someone up here, don't be hiding in the back row. We're gonna have some good news out of you for a change.
Good afternoon, Council, we do have the 2.15 million is in Mississippi PA, we're currently what they call step three of five, as soon as they approve that, we get obviously into step four or five, and we usually have that 2.15 in about 10 to 15 business days after that. So I'm hoping by the first meeting that we have in August or the following one, that we'll have that money available.
So we're staying even?
Sir?
Staying even, everything coming?
Sixty days, sixty days in advance, sixty days in advance.
Alright, gotta pay attention. You say something, don't be hiding in the back row anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Alright, all in favor of the routine agenda? Those opposed, motion carries, chair entertainer motion to adjourn?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett, any discussion? All in favor? Meeting is now adjourned. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the special meeting?
No.
Alright, moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by, second by Mr. Gines, any discussion? Alright, give us a second, we're.